Good evening, welcome to our March 27th Town Council meeting. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Present.
Council President McCartney?
Present. So, good evening. This month, we had International Women's Day this month, and, okay. Thank you. So, this month, we recognized International Women's Day, and I heard about two students who happened to like the Beatles. So, we thought it would be a nice time to recognize the students. It's a good time. We have here this evening Alia and Angie. I lost Angie. I know she's here. And we have two members of our West Orange Arts Council. So, I'm the liaison to the West Orange Arts Council. And I saw products in the Art Center, 551 Valley Road, and I was curious about them. And there's a little write-up that these are young students that have started their own business. And I thought it would be excellent. We have Principal Bob Clempe here, and Teacher Nancy Silva, and we're waiting for one more teacher to come. So, I really would like everyone to come up, and maybe the students can talk about their product. And Amelia and Carol Lemon Black are both here. It got really crowded all of a sudden, so I'm losing people.
My name is Carol Black Lemon. I'm a member-at-large of the West Orange Arts Council.
Amelia Panico, I'm also a member of the West Orange Arts Council.
I was going to introduce some of the events that we have first.
Oh, yep. Okay.
So, the West Orange Arts Council Center is located at 551 Valley Road in West Orange, and we have a lot of different activities going on that we're really excited about. I will just read off a few. In conjunction with the West Orange Public Library and Friends of the Public Library, our very own Amelia Panico, who's an amazing photographer, has an exhibit on right now called "Women Speak: Speaking Our Truths: Portraits in Photos and Words." It's an amazing exhibit that will run for how long? Till the April 11th. Okay. Also, at the West Orange Arts Center, we have emerging young artists from the West Orange High School. It's now on exhibit in our gallery, these talented AP art students. We want to encourage them as rising stars in the art industry. And that exhibit is open now until March 31st, and weekends from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. We also have a call for artists entitled "Art from the Heart 2018: Fueled by the Passion of Artists." That exhibit will run April 7th through May 20th. The drop-off for anyone interested in exhibiting is Saturday, April 7th, at 9:00 a.m. And the opening reception is Saturday, April 7th, 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., and it's open to the public. Let's see, what else? Poetry reading by the West Orange Arts Council, led by Peggy Vasallo, will be in the meeting room at the West Orange Public Library, April 8th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. We have a great Mother's Day shopping boutique, which is just in time for that special lady in your life or treat yourself. This is going to be a two-day pop-up boutique featuring handmade jewelry, cards, clothing, and all-natural skin products, and home items created and designed by local artists. And that's about it. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Carol. I wanted to say that, just so everyone knows, the West Orange Arts Council is not only a gallery, we just have the exhibit of West Orange AP art students, art from the heart that Carol just mentioned, but it's also a gallery and gift shop. So, there are beautiful handmade items also at the Art Center.
And we're always looking for new members and people to participate. So, I'm here to proudly introduce you to Isla, Alia, Camila, Camille. And I wanted to read you what she had written on her website.
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
I want to read you what she wrote on her website, so you know a little bit about her. "Alia founded Nature's Pout when she was 13 years old. As a seventh grader, she undertook a research project for school, and during her investigation, she discovered that dangerous chemicals abound in drugstore and name-brand cosmetics. From carcinogens and lead to coal tar and preservatives, these toxins commonly found in beauty products are disastrous to our bodies. Making the connection between her research and her personal life, Alia realized that she was at high risk of getting cancer already. Her wonderful father sadly passed away from multiple myeloma in 2013, and her resilient mother recently recovered from breast cancer in early 2017. After discovering that so many cosmetics increased her risk of contracting this terrible disease, and that the commercially available natural and safe alternatives were very expensive, Alia started to experiment with different, all-natural ingredients to create healthy and safe lip and body care products for herself. With a bit of encouragement and enthusiasm from family and friends, Alia decided to share her all-natural wholesome lip and body care goodness with the world." And I use her products myself, and they are absolutely amazing. She has her own website, and here she is.
Alia, come up.
So, hello, everybody. I'm Alia, and, like has been mentioned, I am the founder, CEO, and teenpreneur of Nature's Pout, all-natural lip and body care products. So, I just want to start off by thanking everyone, my teachers, Ms. Silva, Ms. Sakero, Mr. DeJesus, Mrs. Martino, and Principal Mr. Clem, the town officials, Mayor Carisi, and the honorable council members, especially Councilwoman, Council President McCartney.
Thank you.
As well as my family and friends, my mom, who's been such a great support to me, my aunt, my grandma, and my Aunt Honey, as well as my brother, who helps me, and my supportive friends. So, I started Nature's Pout, like was said, because I did a research project in my half class with Ms. Silva on dangerous household chemicals, and I discovered that lots of toxins abound in what is commercially available and commonly available to everyday people. Especially considering my family's history of cancer, I wished to create something that was not laden with such toxins, parabens, preservatives, and other detrimental chemicals that can harm us. I also wish to educate others about natural products and empower people to live natural lives. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to have a business. I know that not everybody is able to see a problem and have the means to fix it. So, I am eternally grateful that I am able to work on fixing the problem that I saw. And I want to give back to the community in this way, and I want to show others that they can make their dreams into a reality, especially kids and teens who are often told that, "Oh, you're young, you can't really do anything to change this," or "This is how it is." Well, if you see a problem, then you have to fix it, and if you see something that you know you're passionate about, then you have to pursue that passion. As my Aunt Honey would say, I am a little rebel, and I am an activist, so I'm very passionate about gun control, women's rights, LGBTQ+ rights, and representation, as well as Black Lives Matter. So, I, as well as spending a lot of time on business, also wish to help my community and help America be great with these issues, and make it a more accepting, loving, and diverse place. So, just thank you, everyone, for allowing me to be here and be acknowledged today. Thank you to the West Orange Arts Council, Pat Matrangelo, Carol Black Lemon, and Amelia Panico for introducing me. And yes, thank you.
I think it's a little bit of a sad history, but a beautiful inspirational story. And I wanted to ask her teacher, actually, Suzy Caro, and Nancy Silva, if you can come up, because just to share some of that inspiration, your timing's perfect.
What did you want?
Alia just talked about her business. It was very inspirational.
Sorry.
We put you on the spot. I just want to say that I'm really proud of Alia and everything that she's done. We encourage the kids to pick a topic that they're really interested in, and to try to make it fun at the same time, and to take it to another level. I love that she did that. I love that she was able to learn so much and to really make a big difference with it, and I'm really proud of you all.
Yeah. We all are.
Thank you.
If I could just brag about her for a second. I'm her eighth-grade science teacher, but I also have the pleasure of having her in our STEM club, and she just competed in the Rube Goldberg Machine Contest, and her team created a machine to pour a bowl of cereal. And they placed third in the contest. This was our first time going, and they worked so many hours, and they were sure they weren't going to succeed at their challenge, but they did. So, I'm so proud of you.
Excellent.
You're always creating things.
Mr. Clem is here also, if you'd like to say a few words. And Sue, can you introduce Angie for us?
I don't know. Angie?
Okay, good.
Caught this off-guard a little bit, but I'm also very proud of our accomplishments, to have these students, entrepreneurs, doing what they're doing at this age, and others. I mean, Liberty's turning out so many young people that amaze me and put Liberty on the spot and on the map, and again, highlight our teachers' hard work, so I'm just so proud of all of our accomplishments. Alia's great job. Our second entrepreneur is Angie Cancel. So, Angeline, you can come up, Angie, if you want to come up, and then you'll present.
Matt, can you get that?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Angeline Cancel, founder and CEO of Rockware Jewelry. I would like to thank Mrs. McCartney for inviting me to speak about my jewelry business tonight. When I was younger, I was obsessed with rocks. I was so obsessed that I went as far as to write my own book illustrated with models and pictures. I borrowed library books about rocks so I could learn about the different kinds, how they formed, and how long a single rock has been around. On my ninth birthday, I got a rock tumbler, a machine that smooths rocks the way the ocean does, so I could turn the rocks that I found in my backyard into smooth treasures. I remember this one rock that I tumbled that I loved so much. My mother helped me put a bead cap on it, and I wore it on a chain almost every single day. That pendant is the one that I'm wearing right now. This one necklace later sparked an idea that I could make and sell these one-of-a-kind rock pendants. I started selling my jewelry at my father's job and at local craft fairs. I didn't make very much money from selling my product at his job, but the craft fairs were more of a success. The fairs I went to were for kids to sell their creations, so there were more kids than adults, and most of them seemed interested in my unique pendants and earrings. A few weeks later, I hit on the idea of selling online, and last summer, I convinced my mother to let me start an Etsy store. Now you can find all of my rock pendants, keychains, and earrings for sale on my Etsy store, Rockware Jewelry. The coolest thing about an online store is that people from countries all over the world view my products. Another thing I love about having my own business is being able to share my love for rocks with many people and earning a little extra money at the same time. Also, creating my products is really fun. Although it takes a while to make each item, it makes me feel good to be doing something productive, instead of playing Minecraft or Roblox, which don't get anything accomplished.
Still fun.
Having my own business has been a lifelong dream, and even though it is difficult in some ways, I've learned a lot, and these difficulties will make me a better businessperson. My biggest difficulty is advertising and finding ways to get people to visit my online store. I'm sure I'm not the only small business owner to have this problem. I've put flyers in mailboxes and on windshields. My mom has advertised on Facebook for me, and I've asked local stores to display my tear-off flyers on their bulletin boards. I'm always looking forward for new ways to reach out to more people to market my products. One solution I just discovered is email marketing. This is when you send the same email to many people at the same time with sale alerts, new product alerts, and promo codes. So, if you would like to join my email list, you can sign up by going to my Facebook page, just search "Rockware Jewelry," and clicking the link. It'll take you to a Google form, which only asks you for your name and email address. I hope that by making this speech, I can accomplish two things. One, I hope that you will support my business by buying some jewelry or spreading the word about my business; and, two, I hope to inspire other teens to start their own businesses and get out there in the world. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Wow. Quite inspirational.
Shark tank, watch out.
We thank you so much for sharing your stories with us, and we wish you continued success. We're so pleased you were able to come tonight to introduce yourselves and share your stories with us. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And all the teachers, principals, keep up the good work. We love to honor our students here. Thank you. Comments?
Oh, just kudos. Congratulations. Always great to see my Liberty friends in the house, all the great teachers, and Mr. Clem. Ladies, very, very impressive and very appropriate. This is Women's Month, and, you know, women power to you. You have, you know, always very impressive. I think I met you, young lady, at the Arts Council Holiday Bazaar, maybe? Yes, I bought some products from you, and I was impressed then, so great inspiration. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, Sue, thank you. Next on our agenda is a senior citizen survey. As you know, the results of the survey were distributed townwide. They were due back last October, and we have the coordinators of that program from Montclair State, and our Health Department, and Michelle Castellino here, our Councilwoman, that was helpful in coordinating this project. Erin? Okay. You want to introduce yourself first, and then we can give us a little start.
Do you need a chair?
Okay, good evening. Can you all hear me okay? Okay, good. So, my name is Erin Bungar Johnson. I am a senior research associate at a center with a really long name, so get ready. It's called the Center for Research and Evaluation on Education and Human Services. I told you it was long. So, for short, we go by CREES, and we are an independent external evaluation, research, and assessment center within Montclair State University. And so, we had the privilege of working closely with the Township of West Orange to collect some really in-depth and great feedback about how things are going in West Orange for folks who are 55 years old and better. So, we're just going to get set up so that there's a screen. We've got some findings to share with you today. I will give you a heads-up that we had such an amazing turnout on this survey, and we had so much data, we would be here until next month if we went through every itty-bit of data that was collected. So, my charge today is to, in a brief amount of time, so that you don't yawn, in a brief amount of time, share with you some of the big-picture findings and big-picture information that came from the survey. Know that there's lots of other details, but for the point of this presentation, I really wanted to focus on sort of the high-level, big-picture findings. So, all right. Do you guys want to go in the audience? Oh, we've got lights going on or off. Okay. So, that brings us to the background, so we'll just wait until everybody gets comfortable a little bit. Can I hit a light switch?
I don't know if I would do that. It'll be really dark. I think that's fine.
So, I told you a little bit about who I am, and so I'm going to share with you the findings from this survey. But before I do that, I do want to give you a little bit of background, because I think it helps give a little bit more sense of where did this come from. So, the Township of West Orange contracted with CREES to help them do this survey. As an independent external person, we were unbiased coming into this, we had no expectations, and not knowing where this was going. And so, part of our work was really in three phases. The first one was the questionnaire design. This is designing the survey. And we took this on, worked in close partnership with the Township of West Orange to talk about what are the key things we need to be asking, what do we want to know, what are the key questions we want to know about at the end of this? So, we designed this questionnaire, and by doing that, we focused on six key community dimensions, which are community services and resources, transportation, housing, health, communication, and then overall. Trust me, we're going to go into that a little bit more detail. We pulled questions from existing instruments, like those from the AARP, as well as the World Health Organization, and where we needed to get some unique, specific questions to West Orange, we designed those questions. So, we put together this instrument, and we decided we needed some feedback from the community before we sent this out. So, we brought together a small group of individuals, some of which I see are in this room, so thank you for coming out. Those folks came, they took the first version of the survey, and they gave us all kinds of feedback about, "We like this, we don't like this, can we make some adjustments?" Using that feedback, we updated the survey, and now we've got an instrument. The next phase was the recruitment and the administration of this survey. This took about three months. It went from August through October of 2017. The survey, which was 89 questions, it was a long one, was available both in paper copies throughout the township, as well as online. And the recruitment was both broad-based and targeted. And what I mean by that is broad-based, there were letters sent home in the tax bills, there were flyers posted around the town, and there were various other sort of recruitment efforts to say, "Widespread, hey, come take this survey, we want your feedback." There was also targeted recruitment that was done as well. So, for example, there were presentations made at the West Orange African-American Organization, the West Orange Hispanic Foundation, various houses of worship, and various other kinds of targeted, "We are here, we want you to know about this." So, opportunities to ensure that this survey was available and people knew about it throughout the township. In addition to that, we trained some survey ambassadors. We knew that one group of people is not enough to get the word out in a town like West Orange. So, we trained a group of invested stakeholders to say, "Hey, can you help us spread the word and share this information out in the community?" Once that data came in at the end of October, we went into data analysis mode, and so the staff at CREES worked to do both some statistical analyses, as well as some more qualitative content analysis of the data. So, let's talk about this data a little bit. So, who took the survey? We had 753 completed surveys. Our target was 375. We grossly exceeded that target, so we thank all of you who participated and gave us your feedback. That represents 6% of individuals in West Orange aged 55 and older. We're really excited about that number. That's a great number for these kinds of surveys. Who comprised that group? What was the average participant looking like? Well, by and large, our respondents were most frequently white, female, having an education at the graduate school level, and having a household income of 100 to about $150,000 per year. That said, more than half of our respondents have lived in West Orange for 25 years or longer. So, this was a group of respondents who have spent some time in this town and really know this town. What about age? So, we talked a little bit about some other things. What does age look like? And what this shows you is, the dark bars represent the proportion of our respondents for the survey. The gray bars represent the proportion of the population of West Orange. So, what we want to do is to show you a little bit of comparison about what we got versus what's in West Orange. So, the point of showing you this is that for some age groups, we got a larger proportion than actually is in West Orange, and for other age groups, we got a smaller proportion. So, what you can see is sort of on our bookends, our older age groups and our younger age groups, we sort of missed the proportions a little bit, but for our middle years, we definitely got it. So, strengths of this assessment, I'm a researcher, we always got to tell you the strengths and the limitations, right? So, the strengths, this is a snapshot of what is currently happening. We had a really extensive, comprehensive survey that gave us a lot of information about what life looks like right this instant in West Orange. We had a really large sample size, which means that we have a little bit more confidence in the data that we've collected in terms of really representing what's happening. There were widespread recruitment efforts. These community-wide surveys can be very difficult to recruit for, because people are all over, right? It's hard to really capture a whole community. There were a lot of recruitment efforts, and there was a commitment to find people where they might be hard to reach. We also had some limitations, as with any kinds of surveys and research that we do. As I showed you with that age bracket, some of this data may not be representative of all age groups and all subgroups of older residents in West Orange. So, what we know is that we had some underrepresented data from those in younger age groups and older. We know that we had some underrepresented data for respondents who identify as black or African-American, Asian, and Hispanic, despite the targeted recruitment efforts, and we know that there was an underrepresentation of residents with a high school degree or less. So, what that tells us is, as a result, the specific opinions and information from these groups may not necessarily be reflected to the fullest extent in this data. So, just know what this is and what this is not. Also, the survey, the data represent one point in time. We can't tell you about how things have evolved over time, we can't tell you about predictions of how things will change in the future, we can only tell you about what it looks like now. The survey was long, some people didn't get all the way through it, which we acknowledge. We got lots of information, but it was a long survey. And last but not least, the survey was only available in English and Spanish. We know that there's a diversity of languages in West Orange, so there may be some folks who were not able to... so there may be some folks who were not able to read the instrument, although I know there were some translation services made available. Okay, so now for the background, now we can dive into the data, right? So I'm going to go through this in terms of those six key community dimensions. And so let's dive right into community services and resources. So what we learned about is that there's a wide variety of programs and services that are available in West Orange that people do take advantage of. Individuals, in particular, individual respondents noted that the library is very well-known and used, Turtleback Zoo, and Cody Ice Arena. These were fairly well-known and used services and assets in the community. Volunteer opportunities were available in the town. Individuals thought that they were meaningful and they could do productive activities. And respondents were even willing to spend a small fee, maybe $5 to $10, to participate in additional services. The bar chart on this slide basically shows you a little bit of the distribution for how people rated their overall level of satisfaction with services and resources. You can see it's pretty much right in the middle. So we don't have a huge amount that are super satisfied, but we don't have a huge amount that are super dissatisfied based on our respondents. So let's talk about the other side of the coin. What we learned by and large is that there's a lack of awareness about existing resources and services for residents aged 55 years and older. What we learned about too with this point is that, so for example, 70% of our respondents said that they were unaware about educational seminars available for older adults. But nearly half of the respondents said that they would be interested in participating in those services. So people are interested in participating in the services that are available, but they don't know that they are available. Some of that speaks to the issue with communication and promotion. Not all of the information is reaching the targeted audience based on the respondents that participated. Lastly, on that slide that I wanted to point out is, when we asked about what people thought about was a major or a moderate problem in the town, in addition to about two-thirds saying not knowing what's going on as a problem, about half also felt like their voice was not being heard. Okay, let's go to transportation, right? We got to get around, we got to move around. So what we learned is that four-fifths, about 80% of respondents are driving, and they are driving regularly, which tells us that the respondents to this survey were a mobile, moving-around kind of group. And most folks, perhaps because they are driving, said that it was fairly easy to get around West Orange. On the other side here, thinking about the needs that came out of the data. Next, there we go. There was a very key theme, a very key theme. There was a big theme that came out of the data that said that respondents had safety concerns, predominantly around pedestrian safety. About half of our respondents said that they felt unsafe with the sidewalks, sometimes because they were nonexistent, other times because they were uneven or there were cracks. We also had about another half who said they felt unsafe crossing the street because of the way the intersections are and the crosswalks. We also heard some folks say that there was a lack of walkable destinations. It was hard to actually get to those places and walk. There was a lack of parking in downtown. Those two might be somewhat connected, but we couldn't tell that from the data. And there's a lack of knowledge about schedules for public transportation. We know that public transportation exists, but the availability of that information, some people weren't aware of that. Okay, housing. What's the good stuff that came out about housing? The good stuff is, by and large, the majority of our respondents have a desire to stay in West Orange. About two-thirds of individuals wish to stay in their home in West Orange and feel like it is a good place for them to stay as they grow older. And about a half of respondents indicated that they still would like to remain in their house in 10 years. So thinking about the majority of our respondents in that sort of 70-ish age bracket, that means that you've got a lot of people in 10 years who are 80 and above who wish to stay here. And the vast majority of respondents indicated that they felt safe and secure here in West Orange. What's on the other side? Okay, by majority, and I'm talking 90% of our respondents, indicated that high taxes were a moderate or a major problem. Similarly, our respondents indicated that they felt that there were limited options for affordable housing. So not only did they indicate that their taxes were high, but they felt that there weren't enough other places for them to go that were affordable. In addition, we heard about, maybe a quarter to a half of respondents also said that they felt like they needed extra support for home improvement. This is things like landscaping, and as we all know, in the last few weeks, snow removal. Okay, next up, health. Let's talk about what's good about health. The respondents came from a place of people who rated their health as good or excellent. About 80% of our respondents said, I'm in pretty good health. I feel good compared to my peers. In addition, more than half indicated that they were physically active. And what I mean by physically active is being moderately activity, so a little bit of heavy breathing, 30 minutes a day for five days a week. That meets national standards, so that's pretty great. So we have an active, healthy population, at least that responded to the survey. And also, people favorably viewed the healthcare services that are available to them. They felt they were conveniently located and well-maintained. So what's the other side of this? Well, surprise, there was a lack of knowledge about what services were available. People still felt a little uninformed around this. There was a small portion of the population that felt that they were food insecure. So what that means is that people were unsure if they had enough money to pay for their next meal. And they were unsure that they would know where to get that next meal from. This was about 10 to 20%, depending upon how deep you looked into food insecurity. But it's an important thing to know that there was a segment of the sample that felt that they were food insecure. In addition, there was a, there were some respondents and some themes that came out around feeling like people didn't have enough transportation to their doctor's appointments. Of note, while 80% drive and probably can get around, that 20% or so that isn't able to drive felt like they didn't have enough options to get around to their doctor's appointments. All right, we're getting there. Community, the next part is communication. So I was surprised by this, so this is a good thing. 90% of our respondents said that they use email and the internet almost regularly. And regularly might be daily. That's a very large chunk based on this sample. We also heard that by and large, people relied on getting information through word of mouth, their family and their friends. And they also heavily relied on the newspaper, radio, and TV to help understanding about what services and resources are available. Next up, we heard that overall, with regard to communication, about half of individuals said that they were very uninformed or uninformed about what was going on. And they also requested that there was an area for improvement around centralizing information about these programs and services. So for example, about 80% said that they would like to see some sort of resource guide with all of the opportunities available to them. Another 70% requested that there is a calendar available of when these services happen. Last but not least, overall, so what is the big picture of all of this information? What we learned is that about 40% of respondents said that West Orange is an excellent or a good place to live as they grow older. Most respondents, about 50%, said they were prepared to be an older adult, which meant that they had prepared wills or they had done some renovations in their homes to better enable them to stay there over the long term. And when we asked folks, what was the most important of all of these community dimensions, of health, of transportation, of housing? When we asked folks, what's the most important thing to you? What we heard by and large was health, communication, and housing. Those were the top three sort of dimensions that came out from respondents. So what's the takeaways? What's the next steps? What's the so what of these findings? The first thing is that by and large, we noticed that folks weren't polar. They weren't feeling like they were super satisfied, but they weren't feeling that they were super dissatisfied. It was sort of right smack in the middle, which means that there are some opportunities for growth. In addition, we know that health, communication, and housing are most important, which means that potentially, as for programmatic efforts, prioritization might consider those three areas because those are most important to folks. We also learned that respondents would like to remain in West Orange, but that taxes may prevent this, so that can be a real issue for folks moving forward. And lastly, there are services and resources that exist. And for some people who are able to get that information, they're really happy with it. But by and large, there's a lack of awareness of this information and where to get it. Some of the last few takeaways is that in this survey, our average age, I believe, was 70. But our age range went from 55 to, I believe, 96. That's a very large age range, and there's a lot of variation within that age range. And so what we pulled from the data is that different age groups may have different preferences and different needs about the services and resources that they need. So individual programs may need to be tailored to specific age groups. And that gets to the more tailored communication element. In addition, the data suggested that not everyone who's 55 and older considers themselves a senior citizen. And so to target communications to senior citizens may be missing the mark a little bit. And last but not least, some of the data suggested that additional opportunities would be helpful to help older adults share their opinions in a more, maybe ongoing or consistent way. So this was a high-level summary of hundreds of data points across 753 surveys. Tried to give you a little bit to whet your appetite about the kinds of data that we collected. If you'd like more information, the report will be available, I'm told, within the next week or so. It will be posted, I believe, in a few different places. And I'm sure that the Health Department can speak a little bit more to that about where that is. And it includes some of the recommendations that we offer based on the data collected. And just to close out, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to work with all of you. It has been a pleasure to get to know the staff and some of the residents here in West Orange. And it's been even more exciting to learn a little bit more about the hidden gems in West Orange and to learn more about the community here. So thank you.
Thank you. We wanted to finish the, or continue with the senior survey presentation. We have our director, Teresa De Nova, our director of the Health Department, Teresa De Nova. Give us an overview.
Good evening. I just want to thank Erin and her staff for all of their help and guidance in completing the survey and getting everything done and really organizing us and how to really do this. And I also wanted to thank my staff, Patricia Duffy and Susan Iavino, who worked really hard on it, and all the volunteers that also helped us throughout the community. We tried to reach out to people in different neighborhoods so that we could, you know, reach out to different parts of the community in publicizing the survey and having people take the survey. For us, this senior citizen slash older adults survey needs assessment really is for us to be using as a planning tool. And you heard some of the things that Erin said. So I'd like the opportunity to meet with all of our departments to really kind of go over it before we really get out there and publicize everything. Because I'm sure they may have some questions for each department and what they do. But in looking at some of the results of the survey, we felt that we really need to have that one localized point of information for our older adults. And we've been discussing that, and hopefully, we're going to be working on some other grants to achieve some of these things. But to have, I think that one of the things is that, we really, all the departments really do so much that sometimes you just can't put it all out there. And things look confusing sometimes on the website because there's just so much and so many links you have to go to. So we would like to see a senior, one place where the seniors can go and just click on that one website, and it's going to have everything from every department that's happening. And have the calendar, like Erin had mentioned, because I think that's a nice thing to do also. And, you know, we're here. We've always been here. If anybody's confused, if anybody doesn't know something, if they're looking for a resource or there's something they can do, we can put everything that we know online, but we're still here. All it takes is a phone call, and we can talk to that person and direct them to, whether it's the township that provides the service, or the county that provides the service, or anybody else in the community to help our residents. And, you know, I urge them to do that because that's what we're here for, is to help them. So we're going to look at the document, and we're going to really go through it and see what it is that we can do better, what we can enhance, and take the information that we have and try to provide better services, maybe more varied services. But also, it seems like we really need to promote what we're doing more because if people are saying they don't know what we're doing, then we have to let them know.
About the transportation book?
Well, that wasn't for tonight. I just had it with me. This is online, anyway. It's online. So that's really, I don't know if you have any questions for me or questions for Erin.
I don't have a question, but you know, I found, I don't know if you're familiar with this, but this was from John P. Rent a House newsletter. It's dated 2009. I have saved it. It comes at my school, I've saved it at my school in our month of March. It has so much information in it. And if we just heard in the presentation that 90% of our residents or 90% of the people that took the survey have access to the internet, it might be, I don't know where this came from, I could see all the people in the Health Department are listed here. It talks about writing, it talks about library, it talks about myths and facts, what you may not know about St. Patrick's Day, it happens to be March. There is a calendar on here, there are recipes in here, and information about Irish-American women. There's like research, different pieces, like a newsletter. I don't know where this came from, but this seems like it might be that chock-full of information piece of, that missing link that we're talking about, that maybe this is something we can reinstate. I don't know.
I'm not sure what the document is.
Or where this came from, right. No, I'll share it with you. List birthdays from different people at the Rent a House. It just seems like it could be a nice piece of information to share.
Thank you. Ms. De Nova, thanks for attending tonight. You just mentioned that it would be good to have one central place for seniors to go to, and then you said you're happy to answer questions. Perhaps since there's probably going to be a lot of people watching this portion of the meeting video, maybe you could just give them the phone number and/or an email address for the seniors to call or communicate with you to get this information.
Well, the Health Department number is 973-325-4120. Mrs. Duffy's number is 973-325-4105. And the nursing is 973-325-4131.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor McGrino.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. De Nova, thank you, and to the members from Montclair State, thank you for a great presentation. I just have a quick question. The thing about it is, and I love data, and that's what I was saying, is, but I was wondering about the content and the validity of the data and the polling, the polling protocol, the survey protocol. What was, you know, the outcome for saying, how did you guarantee that people taking the survey on online were West Orange residents? And that's what, you know, I have this question. It's the validity of the survey. Sure, thank you.
Erin, you have to come up to the microphone. Thank you.
And this is not a criticism, it's just a question.
No, I appreciate the question, so thank you. So it seems like there's a couple elements to that question. And so the first part is, how do we know that the people that participated are West Orange residents? And how do we make sure that the people that participated are 55 and older, right? So what we did is, there was a screen, there were two screener questions before anyone could go any further in the survey. One was, what town do you live in? And if they did not check West Orange, you were excluded from the survey. And what year were you born? And if it was not the year that corresponded with being 55 years or older, you were excluded from the survey. So that was point one. Point two is that what we tried to do is use as many existing questions from validated, existing tools that are well-known in this field. So that way, we could be sure that the questions were good questions and went after the topics and the content that we wanted. In those areas where we didn't have an existing question, especially around specific things unique to West Orange, West Orange, we... unique to West Orange, West Orange, we wrote those questions. And we used our pilot testing to better understand how those questions went, if they were confusing, how to improve them, and we did our best to incorporate that feedback. I can tell you that we did not do a full-on validity test on every question of the survey. That would have added a whole lot more time and a whole lot more resources involved in this. And I think that for what we did, which is really focusing in on what does life look like here, so that we can get some information for planning purposes, that may not necessarily have been a key priority in, in that research design.
Okay, I have one last, I'm, I'm sorry, Council President. And thank you, and that, that's, that, that answers, you know, a good part, because that's just an important part of, you know, the voting protocol. My other question is, is if available, is there survey data, polling that you've done for other municipalities within the same confines, that is available, that you can pull in and merge with the West Orange data? So one, we as a town council and the Health Department could get an idea that, well, this town does something different than we do, maybe we can communicate with them and find out a better way of doing something, not being critical. So just wondering, is part of your, do you have data like this from other municipalities like West Orange or closing comparison to West Orange?
So we have been contracted by some other townships to do some similar work, but just as this survey is the same, that data and those products are owned by those other townships and resort, and, and entities, so it is not for us to share that, just like we wouldn't share your information with anyone that asked us either, because we don't own it. We collected it, we reported it, and we provided it to you. So in those other towns, if you did want that data, that would, you would need to request that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Council President. I also have some questions on validity. Thank you again for the hard work, and to, to the administration and Councilwoman, Casselina, for our hard work. Just two, two issues that struck at me. Number one was the, the representation, the 6%. Do you feel, basically your experience, that that, you know, that's, that's a sufficient enough penetration to be able to consider this a, a planning tool?
Thanks for that question. I didn't talk about this in the presentation, so it's almost like, thanks for, for laying the groundwork, so I can talk about this for a moment. So when we came up with our target sample size, our target sample size of 375, that was based on a margin of error of about 5%. So that's what, typically what we shoot for in these kinds of surveys at our population-based community level, so that it's sort of the standard practice in a lot of the research and assessment work that we do, that you shoot for about 5%. That was the target number. Because we exceeded that target by, you know, double and a half, and got to 753, I believe our margin of error was 3.6%. So it actually came down even a little bit more. So we felt really good that the information that we got seems to be a pretty good representation of the population overall. Now, as I indicated in the presentation, there may be some subgroups that we had underrepresentation or overrepresentation, so there might be some of those specific subgroups where their experiences or opinions may not be representative overall. But we feel that pop, at the population level, we do feel very confident that this is representative.
Okay, very confident. Okay, good. And then the, the other question is on the indifference, between 55 and 60% on average of the resident survey were indifferent as to the questions. Again, is that-
Sort of neither one.
Correct, exactly, indifferent. So, you know, that, that's neutral.
Neutral.
I would think. So, again, you don't, do we feel comfortable using this data as a planning tool based on the fact that, you know, that percentage of folks felt?
That's what our data said. I feel good about our data. We cleaned our data, we took a good look at our data, we felt very good about it. We have a large sample size, which helps us feel even more confident in the data. Now that said, like, this represented 6% of the population, right? So that means that there's 94% of the population that didn't participate, and that's okay. And, but it may mean that they may have other feelings or other thoughts that might be a little bit different. This is sort of based on statistical properties and what we feel like is a good representation. We feel confident about that. Now that said, that could be an area for additional exploration, to, to talk with folks to better understand what that looks like. So I think this is a starting place. I sort of see this as, and we've talked about this throughout the process, that this is sort of the entry level, let's get a basic understanding of what life looks like here. And now we have, and if this is successful, we should have more questions. And so there may be more efforts to answer some of those questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Yeah, so, thank you so much, Erin and, and your staff. You've been wonderful throughout the whole process, and even tonight with your presentation. You're just so articulate and, and really understanding our, our community and, and working with us, very appreciative. And all the volunteers that are here this evening and the Health Department for all your hard work. I apologize that this was this week. We were trying to do it earlier in the month, and because of scheduling and just the survey, we wanted it to be as perfect as possible. We weren't able to get it out. I know some folks had emailed earlier that it is a holiday week. I know I have plenty of eggs in my fridge waiting for me to go home to make Italian naught cookies. But the timeframe to get this done was very important, because it had to be presented to, to the council. This is the first time they're looking at it, even though they don't have to vote on it, but it's their first look. And before we could get out to the Planning Board next week for their master plan, this will be given to them so they could prepare for the master plan. We have meetings with the Health Department in regards with Partners in Health, we're trying to apply for some more grants that are out there, they're very time-sensitive, so. And to get it out to the public, Pedestrian Safety Committee, I'm sure, would like to work with this. There are some things that concern them, the Downtown Alliance. So, you know, in order to really to get working on it, we needed to have this presentation tonight. We couldn't wait any longer. But with that all being said, I'm really confident, great questions about, you know, the validity. I know we were out there in the public, working with the public, so we saw that there were a lot of residents that were taking the tests. Obviously, you can't tell from who's online, but the majority of this was done in PDF form. And so, you know, we saw folks come to many of the meetings. Kudos to the volunteers. You really did a great job. And at the end, before everybody leaves, you know, like all of yous who, who participated in getting the survey out to help assist to come up for a, a little group shot, but you really did a nice job. And you really, really worked hard in getting the word out there, and there was many of you that helped, and we really appreciate that. This is great, you know, work in progress. And the Health Department, you know, you really put a lot of hours in there, Susan and Patty, Teresa, I, I can't thank you enough. You know, you were at the pool, you were all over town, you were in the senior buildings, few of you here that have, that have community watch groups, you had some picnics, you had them at, the library was a big participant, and thanks to Dave QB and his staff for helping. Councilman, we were at the Hispanic Foundation. And we saw the numbers, and we saw the numbers coming in low with different participants and certain subgroups, it concerned us. And we were out there. There was 100 copies printed in, in Spanish. You were kind enough, Councilman, to translate for me at the, at the meeting, and folks took, took them home with them. But again, it, it was a little bit intimidating, because it was long, it's, it's an hour, and not a surprise to see that, you know, that, what it was, 55% actually lived in town 25 years or longer, so, you know, people that are very, very vested. So it was an all-out effort, and it doesn't stop here. So during the summer with the pool, we could bring the survey there. I think Director, you're going to have this placed in the various places where they took the survey, so they could see the hard copy if they don't want to utilize it online? I'll let you talk a little bit to that.
Yes, we will. After, after I get to meet with our department heads, just to kind of go over it a little bit, I want them to at least have a first look before it goes out to the public, just in case they get some questions. And, you know, we can roll around some ideas based on some of the, the data that we have. One thing that I wanted to mention that we didn't say is it was an anonymous survey.
Yes.
So, and also, the staff and the volunteers went through training with Erin on, went through training with Erin on how to help to monitor a survey so that you're not doing it in a biased way, to make it as, you know, as objective as possible. And we also worked with, I don't think we mentioned the Mountaineer Club.
Yes.
We also worked with them, and they, they were trained to help seniors or, you know, older adults learn how to do it online themselves and try to show them how to use the website, and they also helped us with some data collection. So that was an effort there also. So it really was a real community-wide effort just to produce the document, so that way we can use it to move forward and do other things and get other grants and-
It'll be in the senior houses, all over, the hard copies, unfortunately.
We'll have it, we had it in the mayor's office, we had it at Recreation, we had it in the library, we, you know, so those kind of things. We had it in some of the senior houses.
And it'll be online, so you could also look it online, and if anybody wants to, you know, some of us to come there to, to speak with you, to go over it, I know I'll make myself available. So whatever we need to do to, to, to circulate it will be done. But more importantly, the grant writer needs this ASAP. So there's a lot of great grant opportunities out there, and hopefully, we'll get some much-needed funding to help assist the, the Health Department in all that they do. So, thank you all for all your efforts, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I like the idea that you're using it as a planning tool, because you can already put things in, in motion and in action to get the word out and, and plan ahead. Thank you.
Council President. I'll just ask a couple more questions. Ms. Johnson, you mentioned that you thought that the, the margin of error was 3.6%. In the report, it says 3.5%. Is, is there any difference there, or is, is one of them more right than the other?
The one in the report is. I was trying to remember that off the cuff.
You didn't mention, no, 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 no problem, no problem. You didn't mention a confidence level. Did, did you take that step of, of figuring out what the confidence level would be for the survey results?
So we use the margin of error to help us with that, and so then the margin of error is plus or minus the three-point, what it says in the report, 5%.
Okay, okay. So 95% confidence level, somewhere around there?
Right, so we, we sampled for the 95% with a margin of error of plus or minus 5%. And so given that we exceeded that, we, we felt that we were in that confidence level or in that 95% confidence level with the margin of error.
Okay, I just didn't see it there, so I just, okay. What do you, what have you done and what do you plan to do with the open-ended questions and answers?
Right, so the open-ended questions, there were several questions on the instrument that where people could write in or provide their own comments. We did a separate type of analysis with all of that data, where we did some content analysis and really looked at coding and themes and, and information that came from all of that data. Those findings are woven throughout the survey. So what you're seeing were woven throughout the report. So what you're, what you're reading in terms of the findings is really the synthesis of both the, the numbers, the quantitative data, and the qualitative open-ended.
Okay. I was very interested by the, the data that seemed to indicate that a substantial portion of the respondents reported household incomes of between $100,000 and $150,000. Can, can you, did you do any sort of further analysis about that? Like, is, is, what would be the median for the reported households? Is it, is it very different from, from these numbers? I'm very interested.
So to be honest, I don't know that right off the top of my head. I know we did look at that, and we would, we were not, if I remember right, again, I don't remember all of the specifics of how representative it was, but I do remember, it wasn't something that made us put a flag up. Now, the household income is both represent, if there are two income earners, it would be the combination of that. The other thing to keep in mind too is the age groups that participated in the survey. So we did have a, a good proportion of respondents that were 55, 55 to 60, 60 to 65. So that was a, a large proportion of respondents, so. That may be some explanation, but probably not in totality. We didn't do a super deep dive in that, in that piece of it. I think that that may be an opportunity for further exploration.
Okay. I, I'm somewhat familiar with this in the private sector, market research. We would, we would typically not wait six months to get a report on a, a survey of this size. Was there a particular reason why it was a six-month period between the end of the survey-taking and the presentation of the results?
Sure. So the data couldn't, the data, the survey closed the end of October. There was a little bit of lag time between the survey closing and officially having all of the results, because there were some paper copies that were out floating around that we needed to get and input the data. So I would say probably by mid to end November, we had all of the data actually compiled and entered. Then we had December into January to do a little bit of the analysis preliminary reporting. We put together the draft report. I believe we shared the draft report with the township in draft form, just to make sure we got all of the details correct in terms of the recruitment efforts. That was shared, I believe, by the end of January. And so then it was just a process of finalizing any adjustments, and I believe the final report came, was done by the end of February, and then it was just a matter of scheduling to get here.
Is, is this what you consider to be the final report?
Yes.
Okay. Obviously, you have a ton of data if you've gotten so many survey responses. Is that available for us if we wanted to see that, or is that restricted in some way by their contract? Like cross tabs and that sort of thing?
So I'm going to ask Teresa to comment on that, just because we've given everything that we have. So I think the, the way that that is shared is no longer sort of on us, so.
I don't know if I have a longer or short, short answer for that. Yeah, there is other data, but it's, it's very, you know, it's more, it's very cumbersome, and this is really the result of what the data is. So to look at the, each minutia of the data, I don't see the point of that.
Well, I certainly would like to see it. That's typically what I do when I do survey analysis of results. I would definitely like to see whatever cross tabs, I don't even know what you did, because we just, we just saw the material, so.
I'm not adverse to it, it's just it wasn't for this forum, because it's, it's very complicated and it's very boring and it's, you know, you're looking at every little thing. This, this is, well, it is just to look at statistics, just to look at statistics, it becomes very cumbersome. This was the summary of everything that was found. If you want to take it and pick something apart, you know, that's fine.
Great.
Yeah, it, it just wasn't, it just wasn't user-friendly. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't in bullets, I, there's nothing that was excluded, so.
You know, just as, just as people complain that the survey was too long, well, it was too long, it was this, you know, we couldn't get to, you know, it's going to be the same thing with this kind of data, it's just going to be a lot, it's going to be a lot.
And if it's available, you have it. Some people like minutia.
Okay.
Yes, I'd certainly like to see that.
Sure.
I'm, I'm assuming that it's in electronic form, not in paper form.
Oh, yeah.
Of course, of course.
Wonderful, so that's easy to translate. Thank you.
Because nobody wants to look at paper anymore.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other speakers?
Thank you.
Great presentation. Thank you so much for your time.
It's been a pleasure working with you.
Yeah, go on and go to page, ask the volunteers.
Please, volunteers, so the volunteers can come up.
Volunteers, volunteers, who volunteered?
It's all about volunteers.
Ms. Morelli, Mariel, you were, you were very helpful.
You were there.
Is, is-
Front row, ladies.
Was Josie Velez here, I saw?
She was.
She stepped out.
Please come forward, we have the newspaper here, and we would like to have a photo for it. Thank you, Mariel. You're it.
Who else? Ms. Morelli, I know you, you were out there.
Thank you, please come up.
Ms. Scarp, you were there at the one, yeah. Ladies from the Health Department.
Mary, come up.
And Erin.
Judy. Yes, ladies from the Health Department, Erin. Erin, your team. And, and if you're here because you took the survey, come up, you can come up. Yes, I can.
You're the post, Teresa, Teresa, you're the poster girl.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, full of stuff. It's a newsletter, I'm sure it does. Yeah, there's no advertising in it, right. Okay. Thank you, everyone that participated in the survey. Coordinators, Erin, thank you, it was a pleasure doing work with you. Thank you. Love your enthusiasm. So next on our agenda is the redevelopment update. Jack Sayers, please.
Redevelopment update. Things are going well. A temporary CO is issued for the R over R, which is the residential over retail. And from what I found out today, I think two have been leased already.
Okay.
Two apartments have been leased in the R over R. They are working now diligently in the battery building.
Nice.
Most of the sheet rock is up and I've had some discussions with them about how much more time they're going to be putting into getting that done. And they're now focusing on the, on the, on the battery building. So that's where we're at.
Great. Comments, questions?
Look nice walking down Main Street.
Let's give... Councilwoman Kukovia.
Mr. Sayers, we had some discussion...
Sorry.
Mr. Sayers, we had some discussion at the budget hearings this past, earlier in the month. And there was some discussion that Phase One of the Edison redevelopment project was expected to be generating some pilot revenue this year. There seemed to be, at least on my part, some uncertainty about whether that was true. I don't know if now's a good time to discuss that, as we had discussed back then, or whether you want to wait till later on in the, in the meeting. It's about redevelopment, so...
I mean, it doesn't matter, I can discuss it now or I can discuss it later. As per our contracts with the redeveloper, anytime the temporary CO is issued or CO is issued, the pilot program kicks in. We've had discussions with our redevelopment attorney and we are going to be sitting down, I believe, next week with our tax collector and going over exactly what that pilot program is going to do and how the taxes need to be adjusted.
Okay, so how are they going to be done?
You mean, how are they going to be done?
We're going to build them consistent with the agreements.
Okay.
So we're just, it's just, the meeting is just to basically go through and make sure that we touch all the bases and do the things we need to do in order to do the building.
Okay, so what I was hoping for tonight was perhaps an explanation of, let's say the R over R produces, you said two of them are leased, let's just say they generate $50,000 worth of gross revenue this year. How is that going to be handled? In terms of the pilot?
Well, we're not prepared to give you a pro forma this evening. You know, and we've given, there are performers you have available to you from before. I can tell you that I'm even more confident now that we will be receiving revenues this year from additional revenues from the project. How much, depends on how quickly they ramp up and they run out.
So, again, that's not my reading of the documents. Maybe you could just explain why you think that there's going to be some pilot revenue that the town recognizes this year?
You know, the agreement, without going into a lot of detail now, we'll certainly provide more later if you like, we actually give you some numbers if that's what you're requesting. But the, the, the project, as, as the projects ran out, there will be a calculation made based on those projects and the group of projects as to what the impact is and what the, what the potential revenue is, based on the number of months or the amount of time in the year that the pilot has been in place and on a prorata basis for the units that actually are rented.
So my reading of the governing documents tells me that there is a credit that the redeveloper receives against a pilot for the land taxes that they're paying.
That's correct.
So they're paying roughly $470,000 in property taxes. I don't know the exact number. So for you saying that you expect pilot revenue, that suggests to me that you expect to have pilot revenue of more than $470,000 this year?
Well, if, if indeed what you're indicating is accurate, was accurate, I think it's quite possible that they could be rented out by the end of the year to the extent that that would kick in. However, it's our understanding and it's what we're going to refine when we meet with the attorneys next week, is that the land, the tax, land tax credit is prorata as well. So as, as units come onboard, the credit will only be applied against the units that trigger the pilot, so...
Okay. And the pilot is supposed to be 10% of the gross revenue of the project?
Correct, correct.
So, again, if it's prorata, does it start with the temporary certificate of occupancy in mid, in mid-February?
We, as of right now.
Okay.
So as they start, so for argument's sake, if they have two rented for the month of March, those rents will be applied, there'll be, there will be a calculation based on those two and a prorata taxes to those two units will be calculated and we'll do a calculation as to what the bill will be.
Okay. Because it suggests to me that if the, if the revenue in the pilot is 10% of the gross revenue of the project, and you're saying that you expect it, and I'll just use the $470,000, just because I don't want to do more math and complicate it, that suggests to me that you're expecting a comparable amount of revenue, not gross revenue, but net revenue for the pilot of at least $470,000, which suggests to me that...
No, that's not, that's not accurate, but, but, you know, we'll...
Well, please, please correct me. I honestly...
No, because it's not 470, it's going to be, if, for argument's sake, what would be applied in terms of the pilot will be, if it's two, two three-hundredths right now, the land credit would be two three-hundredths of that.
Let me try and simplify it. It's based on the amount of units being rented and the land credits. So if there's only two units rented in March, it's going to be X. If there's 50 units rented in April, it's going to be X. And it all, it all, it has to play out based on how they, how many units get rented and then obviously with the, with the land taxes.
So is what you're saying is that what you expect to do is divide the number of units that are built in the improvement and prorata those to the land tax?
The land tax credit is prorata, that's correct.
That's how it has to happen.
So...
So there's only, like friends of the month of March, there's only be a credit for two units.
Right.
There won't be credit for 333. $480,000 would be a credit for 333 units. So there'll only be a credit for two units against the, whatever that, which is a much smaller number, obviously, against the smaller rent. And there will be revenues that will come out of that for us. We anticipate.
Okay. Well, perhaps by the next meeting, we could have a further discussion about that.
Sure.
Please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Also wanted to just ask where things stand on finally, I guess, closing on Phase Two?
Yes, we, we've actually had some conversations with the redevelopers over since the last council meeting. Unfortunately, Mr. Diaz is away this week. We are going to be meeting with them next week and going over those documents.
Because I was going over some of the Phase Two documents and one of the, one of the numbers and one of the pieces of the language there had a deadline of March 31st, 2018, as one of the contingencies in the documents. And I'm sorry, I don't have it here now, but do you expect that you'll be able to either have to modify that or you expect to close by the end of...
We'll probably have to modify that because we can't meet with him before the 31st. He's, he's away. We're trying to set up a meeting for next, sometime next week. And once we have the meeting, we'll, I'll have a clearer picture on where we're going.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions on redevelopment? No, we can move to council liaison? Anyone?
Yeah.
Councilwoman?
Good.
Councilwoman, ladies first.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Councilwoman first.
The announcement, the Friends of the West Orange Public Library will be having another fundraiser Tuesday, April 17th. It's an all-day fundraiser at the Oak Barrel Pub. So we look forward to that lunch and dinner. You could go anytime during the day and 15% of all purchases will go to the Friends of the West Orange Public Library. Friends did this fundraiser back last, end of October and it was, it was a great event. A lot of people turned up, so we hope same folks come out, plus more. It was a good time had by all. Just want to thank our Human Relations Chair, Ms. Tammy Williams. I see you out in the audience this evening. You and your committee, Suzanne Pennell, worked really hard on a video for the township ladies in honor of Women's Month. And thank you, that was really, really, really nice. I have to say, I was very touched when, you know, you interviewed myself. I know Councilwoman was interviewed. And it was very, it should come out very touching and a lot of time and effort. So thank you and your committee once again for stepping up. And I also want to mention that the Human Relations Commission has a calendar, I believe some may be in, in the hallway there, for all our township events. So that was mentioned earlier with the survey, but there are some vehicles out there already. And I know the Human Relations presented a couple months ago and they worked really hard. It's a beautiful calendar and it has all the township events. So we haven't received one yet, reach out to them and to get one because it'll be, it'll be most helpful. And our public relations meeting will be the second Thursday of the month. We're looking forward to working on a town-wide booklet promoting our township services. So that's our big project for the year, very apropos after the results from the survey. And we look forward to helping in any way we can. So if you'd like to join us, you're more than welcome to. I think the next meeting would be April, is it eight? Let me see. The date, the second Thursday of April, so I apologize, folks, I should have wrote it down. Thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, Council.
April 12th.
April 12th, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council.
I was close, right?
Thank you, Council President. Just another retake on the Downtown West Orange Alliance. Our Restaurant Week was very, very successful. A lot of the restaurants showed major it upticks in their, people coming in and dining for the first time and actually gaining new customers, people finding out there are really some good places, really what's cooking in West Orange. It really did very well. And a big shout-out to our Township Resident, Alice SinCaprio, who won the $250 gift card. And she told she wants to use it at the Oak Barrel. So it's okay. So it was really exciting. The whole board is very excited and next year will be even bigger and better. A lot of restaurants towards the end wanted to join in, they tried to, but now next year we have an additional pool of restaurants that are interested in participating in Restaurant Week. Also with the West Orange Downtown Alliance, we have our Street Fair coming up, the first weekend of June, which is a combination of the Downtown Street Fair and Edison Day. So we hope you'll all come out. There'll be some great, exciting new events. We'll get to show off the new Community House gym, which people haven't seen it yet. It's, you see Joe Fagin's Discover West Orange, he did a great episode on it. Paul Sito and the members of the board for the Community House did a fantastic job of producing a new gym for the community. It's beautiful, it's got a great indoor surface and it's something we're really, really proud of. So we want to share that with the whole community. Other on our topic is of course the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. Just a little note that we're moving our meetings to Wednesday nights instead of Thursdays because a lot of our members find Thursday nights to be prohibitive for them, so we'd like to have always a full turnout. We had a great meeting a couple weeks ago where we unveiled the new Main Street Road Diet produced by MV5 Engineers. It's, I can't wait to show it to the public, it's in final stages. We showed our board members, made some changes. So the final presentation will be available for our next council meeting. It shows new street schemes, designated parking, single lanes each way. And of course, at Edison Middle School will be the designated mid-block crosswalk with new student-controlled pedestrian lighting, safety lights, and new bump-out parking. So we're really excited about the new road diet on Main Street, something that if it is successful, we can carry up to other made roadways in the township of West Orange. Also speaking about the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, I'm meeting hopefully with John McKinnon and Myla Jacy to get their support to designate a portion of Route 10 by Liberty Middle School as a special school zone crossing, getting new pedestrian, you know, safety lighting there. You'll also notice, if you come to our meetings, you'll see that we're also designating a lot of the school areas for the new stop signs, the neon flashing stop signs that are solar-powered because really trying to focus on making pedestrian safety, particularly not only for our seniors, which is another topic, but also for our students, to make the areas more accessible to them. Talking about seniors, one of the things that we did bring out in our meetings and that we've applied to the county was to get a survey of the light schemes that are at major cross-sections throughout the township. And what I mean by that is that the lights, the traffic signals and the crossing signals are timed for so many seconds per foot to get from one side of the street to the other. So the county's going to give a survey of how certain lights have been timed and then we'll be able to ask them to re-time them. Because our seniors, you know, especially if they're in wheelchairs, if they're on motorized, if they're on walkers or canes, they can't run across a major intersection. So we need to do our survey and the county's been very helpful to get that information so our police department can work with them and try to change the timing for the crossing sections of the different areas. So other than that, you know, we're really moving ahead with our Complete Streets, talking about the Planning Board, how the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board will take ownership of the Complete Streets Program portion of the master plan. So that's something that our members are really excited of. I really got to call a shout-out to the members of the board, particularly Andy Anderson from the County Safety Department, Mike Damon Miller, a West Orange resident in Pleasantdale, who really bring a lot of engineering expertise and understanding to pedestrian safety. Big call-out to Lori Caffetter, who goes into a lot of the bike and walk seminars and brings us back some great information. Mrs. Morelli went to the New York, to the State Department Transportation Safety Meetings and hopefully we'll get some more information there. But there's a lot of things coming and hopefully by June, we'll have the movement on the downtown Main Street Road Diet. Hopefully, we'll have more movement on the traffic light at Alyssa Drive and the new safety traffic lights and speed control lights on Pleasant Valley Way. So things are really happening in West Orange, particularly for safety and which is another topic for the senior survey, which that's what our, you know, residents need. And a lot of the road diet includes sidewalk improvements. So we're really excited and thank you very much, Council President.
No one should have to run across an intersection, so I think that sounds...
Nobody should have to run across an intersection.
That sounds great. Councilwoman? Yes, Councilwoman Kukovia.
Open Space and Recreation Commission is planning a big Earth Day event on April 22nd. Mark your calendars, April 22nd, it's a Sunday. From 11:00 to 3:00, we're going to be working up at The Rock, the open space at the area at the top of Mount Pleasant Avenue across from the Recycling Center. We're going to be taking an inventory of all the trees that we planted last year on Earth Day, see how they came through the winter. Also going to be restaking them and doing some general weeding and mulching. So please plan to join us. There's no, there's no real parking on site, so you'll have to park across from Mount Pleasant, across Mount Pleasant Avenue, either in the Recycling Center or the Summit Apartments or Walk. So just be careful. Just be careful.
May I? We're not going to park on Summit Street. I happen to know, because my husband's chair of open space, that he was able to get a permit through the Police Department and the Superintendent to park at Liberty Middle School and there'll be a shuttle that goes to the site. Also at Liberty Middle School, there's another student that we'd like to recognize also that is planning a swap meet in conjunction with this Earth Day where you can leave, stay at Liberty Middle School and a swap meet. And you just can either adopt other people's stuff or give out to your own. One man's treasure is in, one man's, how's it, one man's trash is another man's treasure. So there'll be a swap meet on that day as well. So there is a shuttle, that's the point I was going to make.
So this is not the first time that you've know more about this, about, than I did. Maybe next year, you can just take over. The Open Space and Recreation Commission... Maybe next year, you can just take over the Open Space and Recreation Commission liaison, because if you're in the same household with the chairman, you seem to be privy to a little bit more information than he's.
I am creating a flyer, though. That's how I know. Thank you.
Councilman.
Thank you, Council President. Wanted to thank you all and members of the public that came out on the 17th. We're here all day, the day before the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Just in general, the biggest increase that we're seeing is $1.2 million in health benefits and pension contributions on top of last year, $1.2 million. So, we have to somehow make that up in the budget. We're looking at a budget of about a 2 percent, which is within the cap, 2 percent tax increase, monetary increase. Grants is a significant portion. Thank you all for the hard work, the administration, Millennium Strategies. Grants are going up from 383 last year to $1.7 million this year. So, we're having a significant injection of grant funds coming into the municipality, which has helped us offset a lot of the increases. So, the budget's still a work in progress. I want to thank the administration, council members for all of our hard work, and we'll see what we can do to protect our home values and make sure that we don't significantly disturb our quality of life. The, as far as the Eagle Rock Senior Citizens Association didn't meet this month, so will meet next month. It was canceled. We're supposed to meet on April 15th. And lastly, just talking to some residents about noise complaints, I do want to thank the administration for picking up the leaves and some of the branches that were out there. So, throughout the municipality, you know, in some cases, I was woken up like at 5:00 in the morning, but you know what? Beggars came and choosers, at least the branches were picked up off the curbs. And Mrs. Sayers, thank you very much for you and your team for that. So, that's all I have to report today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Serrano. And the mayor did send out a note, letting people know that the pickup would start before 6:30 in the morning to alert people about that activity. We have the Environmental Commission meets tomorrow night, and here in Town Hall, they're open to the public. We have a really full agenda. We're still going over the tree ordinance. We are looking at home kits for testing lead in water from the home to the street, street to the home. We're looking at the, how the Environmental Commission works closely with the Open Space Commission on this event for Earth Day. And, and I mentioned the tree ordinance. It is open to the public. We meet here at 7:00 in room 109. Planning Board will meet next Wednesday here in council chambers at, on April 4th. We meet the first Wednesday of every month, 7:30 next Wednesday. I don't have the agenda, the agenda hasn't been posted yet. I have two save-the-dates coming up. They're in May, but I see how fast the months go. One is on May 9th, the West Orange Chamber of Commerce, the 20th Annual Community Awards Dinner. We recognize a police officer, firefighter, and educator of the year, and we'll announce a business of the year. On May 10th, Friends of Thomas Edison National Historic Park have their annual Glenmont Garage Spring Tune-Up. The funds from this event at Llewellyn Park at Glenmont Garage conserves the electric charging, Edison's electric charging station. It's a lovely outdoor event on the grounds of Glenmont. And thank you for the survey and Health Department, Montclair State for this information. Looks like we have a lot of work to do, and I think everyone's ready to tackle that. Victor just mentioned about grants. In one week's time, three grants did come due. One was for technical assistance, and we're looking at the Highland Avenue Station. They're all due on Friday, so that, that was a really nice collaboration between the City of Orange and West Orange. What else was there? Oh, the Together New Jersey, that was the Together New Jersey Transportation Planning Authority. Partners for Health had a grant.
Yeah, Operation Hope.
Partners for, Partners for Health, we're looking for community impact nominations. And I nominated the Police Department's Operation Hope program, seeking drug addiction treatment. And we have 32 volunteers. That also was coordinated out of the Health Department and the Police Department. So, that certainly has made a community impact. And so, we'll get the, the notification of that announcement won't be till November. One more. I can't think of what it was. That's it? Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 25th, 2017, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 2nd, 2017. Councilwoman Castelino.
Present.
Councilman Serrano.
Present.
Councilman Guarino.
Present.
Councilman Kukovia.
Present.
Council President McCartney.
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I understand Dana Nugent is here from the library. We are going to open public comment, but this just seems like a nice segue, having just had the senior survey presentation, that people want to know what's going on in town. Dana's from West Orange Public Library, and she looks like she's full of information to share with us.
Thank you so much.
Another tool, we use our council meeting as another tool to get the word out.
Welcome tonight.
Thank you. My name is Dana Nugent. I am Secretary of the Board of Trustees of the West Orange Public Library. Thank you so much for having me here today. In keeping with the theme of adult services, the West Orange Public Library delivers. In 2017, the library delivered 1,259 items to 597 patrons at 481 different stops. Adults, seniors, patrons that are homebound can contact the library to have items delivered to your home by volunteers. Also, in 2017, 208 senior citizens were given free tax prep services through a partnership with AARP and the West Orange Public Library. This program is also running this year, Wednesdays, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. through April 11th. You can contact the reference desk or the library main number to schedule an appointment. The library, after International Women's Month, will continue to display local artists. Our Director, Dave Cubey, and the staff, in addition to displaying local student art and projects, have been highlighting different artists that reflect the diversity of our community. Coming up in April, the library will display the work of Ricardo Asmando Francis. In this installation titled Mythic Poetic, I'm sorry, the artist depicts the diversity and connection of the human existence while deriving inspiration from Greek and Roman mythology. Mr. Francis has a bachelor's degree from, in fine arts, from the Maryland Institute of College of Arts, and since 1992, has been involved in the development of, and production of community and solo art exhibitions, including curated exhibits in Jersey City and at the Brooklyn Academy of Music. Lastly, the Board of Trustees of the West Orange Public Library, the Director and the staff would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the retirement of the library's Administrative Assistant, Linda Hartner. Linda has worked for the library for the past 13 years. Personally, I would like to thank her. She has been an amazing resource to the staff, to the trustees, to the patrons of the library. We want to publicly thank her for her dedicated service, her friendly nature, her helpful presence, and we wish her the best of luck in her retirement. Last piece. The library has more than 34,000 active resident members in our community. I was surprised by that. And puts on more than 400 programs a year. Please come to the library. Please contact the library. If you're interested in programs, resources, references, there is a monthly calendar that is printed and available online of the events that include adult programs, children's, and teen programs. Please support the public library.
Thank you.
Dana, thank you very much. Thank you. Any other public comment? Tammy.
Wow, it's been a long night. And I understand this is just the beginning. I'm Tammy Williams, Human Relations Chairwoman. I just wanted to invite the entire community, as well as hopefully you guys are aware, on April 29th, we are the Human Relations Commission hosting a community softball tournament. So, for all those folks who love softball, we want to see you with the team. Put your team together, come out, let's have a day of family, a day of fun for the West Orange community. And hopefully, we'll get the council to put on some shorts and sneakers and T-shirts, swing a bat, the mayor, Jack.
I'm going to pay to see that one.
I mean, you know.
I think I'd rather be in the dunk tank.
We want to have some fun. So, neighborhoods are invited to participate, churches, synagogues, just residents, definitely the Police Department, Fire Department, as well as the mayor's office and all the departments are more than welcome to put their teams together. If I haven't heard from any of you guys by next week, you'll get a phone call from me. Just trying to get us to come out and have, and have a good old summertime, springtime, rather, springtime. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds fun.
Are you going to play, are you going to play too?
I am. I'm going to have a team. Yeah, the Human Relations Commission is going to have a team after. I did want to comment on the video. The video should be released on Friday, so the Women's History Month video, which is Women of West Orange. And I do want to thank a lot of the people who came out. We had at least 12 or 13 different women from the community just to come out, tell their story, what inspiration they've had in their lifetime. It's going to be a really nice piece, just to put together some faces of our community, and I'm looking forward to that. It'll be shared through social media. And if you're interested in picking up a calendar, the township calendar, there are copies on the desk outside. You can also contact the mayor's office, and you can also contact the HRC, at hrc@westorange.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Rosary Morelli Ralph Road. I'm not going to comment on the survey yet. I have to digest it, read it, and I need a hard copy in my hands. But I want to ask a question. This was, this presentation was only on the agenda for the meeting. It never went out to anybody in the township. Nothing was ever mailed. We got a phone back together real quick yesterday, and that's what you saw here tonight. The seniors did not know that this report was going to be on tonight's agenda. You know they don't come to these meetings. If they didn't see an agenda, they didn't know what happened. And I think some of the findings reinforce that. The P R. in this town. I don't want to say anything else. Relative to the transportation for the county, at the last meeting, Ms. McCartney, you said nothing changed. Well, something did change. They have a new telephone system. That was the unwieldy process. That was the problem. People would get on the phone, they'd sit on the phone, the call would timeout, the frustration of sitting there, having to call again. So, the system is a totally new telephone system, which should now cure that problem or fix that problem. So, there is a change.
Thank you.
And also, as far as the booklets, I don't know whose responsibility it is, but the resource binders that they give out with the times and all of the trips and how you arrange them, I don't know in this township how it works. Now that I'm with this county board, I'm going to try to get as much as I can out so it could be handed out in the township. There is a book, a new booklet. I did a random sampling, obviously it was not a scientific sampling. Nobody has a county resource binder. So, we're going to have to fix that, too. So, there are changes, and there should be something. Hopefully, we can get somebody from the county to come here and talk about it. Thank you.
And I guess that's your cue. I had asked Anthony to come to make sure he was coming this evening, Rosary, to address the concerns you just mentioned. Thank you, Anthony.
Hi, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFancenzo. When I got up here last time and talked about senior transportation, yes, the phone system changed, but the vendor did not. And that's what I was focusing on. When we did renew the contract with the vendor, which is TransDev, that was one of the stipulations that we had, was that they improve their communication system so that you don't have those drop calls, and it's easier to get, get in touch with them. So, the phone system was the change. I'll have to talk with Rosary a little later about the resource guides. I know that the, at least for senior transportation, they're constantly looking at their documents and trying to improve them and make them more user-friendly. So, I'll talk to Ms. Morelli about that. And the only thing I want to talk about tonight is the Cherry Blossom Festival. I know we're all eager for spring to arrive. We wanted to get here as soon as possible. So, April 7th, we kick off with bike races, starting at 7:00 a.m. April 8th is a 10K run. April 14th is a children's fun run and Family Day. And then, April 15th is the finale with the Bloom Fest, which is a big community festival. Hopefully, it looks like that this year, previous year's weather kind of encouraged the cherry blossoms to bloom before our festival. But the good thing about the cold weather is that it looks like the cherry blossoms actually may bloom coinciding with our festival. So, right now, we're looking at the peak season to be April 7th to April 15th, maybe a little later, because our, the dual blossoms do bloom later in the spring than the single blossoms. So, we just look for everyone to have a, come out and have a good time down there.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And no more snow.
No more snow, no.
So, let me just ask a question, though, about the resource guides. Are there resource guides available? Are, is, are there things that we can have here in Town Hall for people?
Yeah, I can get those for you.
Okay.
I can get you what they have.
Thank you.
Alan Roseman, Fort North Cohen Place. Actually, to tap into, we were looking in West, further West Essex, how the current ruling by the state court on affordable housing was affecting them. I don't know if you're aware of it, but I think there was a ruling for Princeton and East Windsor, they had to have a certain amount of affordable housing, and it looks like that might affect other towns in the state, and whether that's either short or long-term going to affect our planning here for affordable housing. Do you have any insights? I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Alan. Any other comments? Seeing none, closed public comment. And ask my colleagues if you have any responses. I wanted to, yes, I'm going to start with Alan, though, just working backwards. The township has always complied with COA, all of our obligations. I guess it was a few years ago when our governor at that time kind of dismissed the whole plan. We continued to work to address all of our affordable housing needs. And yes, fair share housing, we're in mediation with them right now. So, yes, we're definitely aware of our obligations and the need for affordable housing. I wanted to thank Dana for coming out this evening to give us the updates for the library. Since what we just heard, that there were 90 percent of the people that have internet, that filed that survey, have internet access, you can subscribe to the West Orange Library and get that newsletter and talk about learning something new every day. I didn't know about the library delivering to homebound. I know the Health Department does quite a bit with homebound residents. I think that's a wonderful service that they, that they have since added. Tammy, thank you for all that you do in the community. I don't know that I'd rather be in a dunk tank than play baseball. It does, it does sound fun. And Rosary, followed up with Anthony on your comments and questions. Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Serrano.
Council President, I echo your comments, and I share the same sentiment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castelino.
I call right field.
Really?
I used to be able to pitch in my younger day. I don't, I don't think that would be the case today. I don't think that would be the case today. But, you know, Ms. Morelli, you know, we discussed it at length. I'm not going to reiterate, other than, you know, obviously, not a surprise communications came up as something that we need to fix in working with the Health Department. They're well aware of that. And it seems that we have, as Ms. De Nova said, we have a lot of working pieces, but we need it all to be pulled together, and that is going to be where the effort is going to be focused on. But again, I mean, tonight, we came here, I thought everyone had gotten an email to come, that especially the volunteers. We are here this evening to present to the council, and, you know, we could also still continue to present to the public, and we will do so. And let's see. And the library, again, I'm not going to reiterate, but, you know, great job and very impressive stats by them. So they're doing awesome.
Always good.
Thank you, Council President. Oh, just one thing. I just want to thank Public Works again. This last storm, snowstorm, was another brutal one. Thank God it wasn't as bad as the last one, but they really cleared the roads quickly and put in a lot of hours lately. So thank you to them and the fire department and police department.
Good. Thank you. Councilman.
I call shortstop, so. That's me. So, you know, I also want to thank the Department of Public Works for a great job. I mean, the streets are clean, a lot of debris has been removed, and we thank the administration and the Department of Public Works for that. I'd call it to Rosary. I think you and I need to meet, Rosary, and with our Rent a House Board and see if we can get this thing reproduced at Rent a House. It was done by Marzulli, so let's get him to do it again. So I'd like to get that done. That'd be a benefit to the residents. I think they would enjoy that. So thank you, Council President, for bringing that up. And I concur, too, with your comments about things going on and all the good work that's going on in the township. So, and the survey. Survey was really good. We just needed to get it out to the residents, and I think they'll enjoy it, so, and find it worthwhile. Thank you.
Councilman.
Thank you. Ms. Morelli, thanks for bringing up the question about getting somebody here from the county to discuss the county's transportation program. You and I have been working on this for a few months now, and I know Council President McCartney did not want to have Mr. Viera come tonight because of the confluence with the survey results, but I think now that the survey's been announced, we should be able to schedule him very soon. And Mr. Grossman, we actually, we, meaning the council, actually has a pending executive session to discuss the latest in affordable housing, but as you know, as a journalist, that we're not going to probably be able to talk too much about that. But it's a, I guess, confidential negotiations that we've been trying to have for, I guess, coming up maybe a year, maybe more than a year. And then just not moving along quickly, but perhaps with the litigation that you mentioned, things may speed up. That's all, Council President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Close. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Okay. We're going to review the consent agenda. Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, March 13th, 2018.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Did I miss the bills this week, for this week? Did I miss them?
You missed them.
I'm sorry. Okay.
There's Resolution 96-18, the administration asks that that be pulled this evening from the agenda. And are there any other resolutions being pulled this evening?
Council colleagues, any resolutions being pulled?
No.
No. I've just got a couple of things.
Yes.
On Resolution 97-18, there's a couple of typos in the resolution, one's in the title and the one's in the last paragraph.
It's the one in the paragraph.
There's the last paragraph. It's perhaps the most common typographical error or grammatical error in the United States, which is transposing ITS with IT apostrophe S. And since I'm a grammar nag, as anyone in my family can attest, I just wanted to point that out. And then just wanted to also ask the administration why Resolution 96-18 was pulled, and whether that's what's going to happen now.
We expect that we'll have a resolution back, but we had a couple of concerns we wanted to flush out before you voted on it.
Thank you. That's it.
So resolutions on consent?
I'm sorry. I have to, I was just looking at.
You're in shock. You're in shock.
She's shocking all.
That came from, like, the state. So, anyway. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is passed.
Okay, we have one ordinance on for second and final reading. This is 2538-18, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, traffic parking prohibited at all times on certain streets. On this particular case, would be on Brook End Drive. Make a motion to introduce on first reading.
Move.
Second reading, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes. So if you call, we had an unprecedented presentation from Alaris Health at our last meeting. They told us that they would come to this evening's meeting to come up with an alternative plan. We did get correspondence during the week that they, I saw a letter, that they were not coming up with an alternative plan. So the council will move ahead on this vote that's being presented to us. Any comments on that?
I would like to see the letter. Was it sent to the whole council?
Yes.
Man, I'm missing everything.
It was.
Is today Tuesday?
You're still on European time. Sorry.
I'll make sure.
No, no, no. I apologize.
It's a short letter. You can read it if you want.
Okay, I don't have it in front of me, Ken. Can you? I don't have it in front of me.
I have. Dear Mayor and Township Committee, please be reminded that the undersigned serves as counsel for Alaris Health at West Orange, formerly Kessler Institute for Rehabilitation, located on Brook End Drive in the township of West Orange. After careful consideration and the performance of extended due diligence, our client has decided at this time to withdraw its comments and/or objections to the proposed parking prohibition ordinance amendment for Brook End Drive, presently scheduled for hearing and adoption on March 27, 2018. We respectfully reserve our client's right to renew and/or advance its concerns and/or objections based upon the future impacts experienced on Brook End Drive should this ordinance be adopted. I thank you for your prior courtesies and continuing operations. Signed by Mr. Stevenson, he is the attorney for Alaris.
Thank you. I was thinking, really, the only alternative plan that I could think that they would have presented to us was to have valet parking, that if someone came up, that someone would valet their cars, but that has not been presented. So would you need to vote on?
Public comment.
Any public comment? Yes.
Well, you did, but I would ask, I mean, since we continued it, I would ask, if there's anyone else who wants to.
Yes, if there's anyone that would like to make a comment on this ordinance right now? You're done? Okay. You're ready for us to vote?
Is there a motion to adopt on second and final? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Council President McCartney?
Yes.
Motion, Ms. Carrie? There are no ordinances on first reading. Pending matters, new matters, council discussion.
Yeah, I.
Please, yeah.
No, that's a topic. I think Councilman Guarino touched on, I guess, if safety's doing something as well, the school crisis. Being the school board liaison, they had reached out about the school zone for liberty, and I guess they had a student actually start a petition.
Civil law.
Yeah, so just like I spoke with Mr. Lapore, he said he's calling the state, and it shouldn't be an issue, so.
No, Ms. Carrie, I, oh, I'm sorry. If I, I asked Mr. Lapore, and also, you know, I called out to Assemblyman McKean and Jason to move this, because we're going to need the state, the state road.
Yeah.
So Mr. Lapore's working on a presentation, and then I've gotten response back from John McKean, and, you know, we get the support there, too. So I'll keep everybody in the loop, I mean, as we do, that, you know. And it's good to hear that the student was, you know, he's interested in.
Yeah, that was great. What is the petition for? I'm sorry, I missed it.
He's, he wants to make a section of Route 10, the school zone, which I've, it's part of my complete streets. It's been in the document, but, you know, hey, we could, you know, all the help, all the help we can get.
And, excuse me, counsel, they want to make sure that it goes through, past Ellison Avenue, so, because there's, I guess, a crosswalk there to get to Mount Pleasant School.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Jerry, you said that your meetings are moved to Wednesdays, but do you have, like, the third Wednesday of every month?
It's going to be, it's actually, it's the same week, and I have to give the council, the town clerk, the new calendar. It's like, if it was Thursday, like, it was Thursday the 12th this coming month, it's now going to be Wednesday the 11th, so everything's going to move back.
Okay, just a day. Is that the second week of every month? The Planning Board is the first Wednesday of every month, and the Environmental Commission is the last Wednesday of every month.
It was the 12th Thursday, now it's going to be the 11th, which is the second week of the month.
Sounds like Historic Preservation.
Yes, that would be the fourth meeting that night.
Yeah. Yep.
Do I need, I mean, does it conflict with anything else? No, 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 no.
Another, yeah.
What does it conflict with? No, I mean, councilman.
I think Historic Preservation, I know, meets.
I can move it forward. I mean, my board doesn't mind.
You shouldn't change it for just one person, but yes, both Historic Preservation and the Open Space tend to be on the same nights.
And I think, well, then I can move it to the third. My board wouldn't mind. We just felt that Wednesday was a better night, because a lot of members couldn't make it.
That's, Planning Board meetings are the first Wednesday of every month.
Why don't you keep it, why don't you keep it that way and just discuss it at the next?
It's going to be the third Wednesday of the month, and I'll make it.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Do you have downtown a third Wednesday?
No, the downtown alliance. No, 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 no.
Don't change it for me.
No, 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 Joe, I mean, you know, we want to, no. Downtown meeting.
I think they meet on Thursdays.
I'm not going to go to any more of the Open Space Commission meetings.
Oh, stop.
I'm afraid I'd have to do things in order to get the same access to the information that I think my wife would object to, so.
You can, yeah.
No, then she's got to have you at home. Wait a minute, then she's got to have you at home. Now, you know what I'll do? No, everybody, let me, no, let me look at the calendar, because I like to make sure people can come, but I don't want to prevent people from going to other things. And I know members of my board like to go to other things, too. So let me go back home tonight, let me rework the schedule, make sure it's not around downtown. Thank you, Councilwoman. And I'll make sure it doesn't, like, Planning Board, and I'll give the council, the town clerk, the new calendar. This way, people get to come.
I haven't been able to go.
That's fine, but if it's just me.
No, it's, no, 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 Councilman, believe me.
Because you can just talk with your board about it. Let them make a vote.
They had no problem.
You want to change everything for Krokoviac?
No, it's not changing.
I know what that vote will be.
Shari in the mayor's office can help you with, you know, what boards meet when and all of that. You might want to talk to her.
But I'd like to make it accommodating for people to get to these meetings.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. ABC hearing, none. Are you, I'm sorry, were you done?
No.
Oh, I was just looking. Oh, okay. ABC hearing, none.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
And everyone read their EEOC document right up to today?
Yes, I did.